In bigger cities.
But you got your deputy, didn't you?
Matt, yeah, whenever I was here, Matt had me deputy for a while, so. So, yeah, we can call Cory Deps.
Hey, is that sign new?
We were asking if she was assistant city clerk or deputy city clerk, and we were talking about it.
What's that?
That Title VI sign?
No, it's new.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't think it was weird.
Yeah.
We good?
Yeah, we're good. Let's roll.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled city commission meeting at 1:00 P. M. Madam Clerk, is there decorum?
Yes, Commissioner.
For this week, it is Commissioner Landgraf's turn to lead us in the allegiance and invocation.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day that you have given us and for allowing us to gather for this meeting today. I pray that you be with all of the citizens of Garden City, watching over them and keeping them safe. Lord, I pray that you grant us wisdom and guidance during this meeting so that your will for Garden City can be done. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the last regular meeting. If there are no corrections, they shall stand approved.
I haven't seen any.
Seeing no corrections, they are approved. For this part of the agenda, this is the public comment. Please come up and state your name if you are going to make a comment that is something not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to our next item.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item 6A, the governing body has asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim February 20 through 27, 2024 as Garden City High School Unified Bowling Championship Week.
Commissioner, I move that we approve February 20th, 20th to 27th, 2024 as Garden City High School Unified Bowling Championship Week.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Item is approved.
So if you'd like to read the proclamation and then at the conclusion of that, we'll have the team join the commissioners down front for a picture, if that's all right. And Coach, if you want to say anything too after the reading of the proclamation, you'd be welcome to do that.
Perfect.
You know the drill. You've done this a few times.
Whereas the Garden City High School Buffalo Unified Bowling Team won the Kansas State Bowling All Class Championship for the first time in program history and the first state championship by a unified program at Garden City High School. And whereas the Unified Bowling Team winning the state championship in the all-class Unified Championships gave Garden City High School the distinction of being only one of two schools in the state of Kansas, except all three of their bowling programs win state championships in their respective classes. And whereas a team, these student athletes bowled a team score of 856 at state tournament. And whereas this team was also the 2023 Western Athletic Conference Champion and the Regional Runner-Ups. And whereas the 2023 state championships of all classes consisted of Skylar Rattar Koon, Senior, Kaden Strasser, Senior Carson Nichols, Junior Kylie Whitehurst, Junior, and Chance Orzoko, Sophomore. Whereas the Garden City High School team also includes a dedicated staff of head coach Kip Nichols and assistant coach Kerity Holking. Now therefore, I... Well, at this point, do I say my name?
It'll be Manuel F. Ortiz's.
Now therefore, Manuel F. Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do take great pleasure in expressing the appreciation of the city commission and all citizens of this community on this unique achievement and hereby proclaim the week of February 20 through 27, 2024 as Garden City High School Unified Bowling Championship Week and call upon all citizens of our community to encourage our youth in their endeavors towards excellence in life. Signed and sealed this 20th day of February 2024.
Do you want to say it? Do you want to coach, and then we'll take a picture?
Thank you for entertaining us today, having us here. We appreciate the recognition. This was truly a great thing for us. This is the third season of our program. We were at the school board meeting last night, and I was just telling the school board last night, time has flown by so fast. Just really, it's such a great opportunity for our kids to have this unified program so that we can get all students involved in athletics at Garden City High School. So, you know, we're, as coaches, we're just kind of the cheerleaders. They do the work. We help them get the praise, and we're just happy to be here today. And thank you all for having us in today. Let me introduce the team as we go. We have Skylar Rattar Koon down there. He's our senior. He's graduating. So the state tournament was his last official competition with us. Kylie Whitehurst, she was not with us at the state tournament, but she was integral in getting us there. She bowled for the regional event when we were regional runner-up. Carson Nichols, he was one of our participants. He's a junior. Hopefully, he'll bowl with us again next year. Kaden Strasser, one of our seniors. These two gentlemen are both in our competitive program also. We're leaving this afternoon to bowl our regional event down in Lethal tomorrow morning early, so we're excited about that.
You're awesome.
Coach Howard's here, and she's here as a parent today. She's our competitive assistant coach. The good coach during the unified program, assistant coach is Kerity Holking. I don't know what I'd have done without Kerity. She does such a great job of organizing and, you know, keeping high school kids in lines like Correll and Katz. So she does a great job with all that. And then Chance Orzoko, sophomore. Chance is also in our competitive program. So, you know, we're just tickled to have the opportunity to represent our community anytime we can get out and do that and show the rest of the state that all the way out here in the western part of the state, we can get it done too.
That's right.
So, thank you, guys.
Yeah, let's come on up and take a picture with the commissioners. Is that fine? Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madison Signet, yeah, we'll have her sign it. I'm sure you guys, thanks so much.
Are you going to vote for the commission?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Keep doing it. Keep doing it. That's right.
Make sure you watch this one.
Good luck, guys. Till school's out. Till school's out, yep.
Commissioners, Item B, the governing body has asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim March 1st, 2024 as Read Across America Day in Garden City, Kansas. And I believe this proclamation, if approved, is going to be read at a special event later on in a month.
Is there a motion? Can I entertain a motion?
I move to proclaim March 1st, 2024 as Read Across America Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Second? Has been a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item 7 is the report of the city manager. Before I have Yami come up, I would like to just add a couple of things not on here that we want to provide updates for that are fairly recent. First of all, the moderate income housing application that the commission endorsed for the Sligo project to receive tax credits. We received notification that that was approved. So that's exciting, and hopefully will help that project move forward quickly. And the other thing I would like to invite Finance Director Jared Coleman up to just give a little bit of an update on the status of the conversion between utility billing systems and the notifications that have gone out to customers. Jared?
Good afternoon. Seems like every time we think we've got it sorted out, there's a new pickup, a new bug. So this last weekend, about this recent weekend, the weekend before, the diversified billing solutions that we use for the new utility software experienced a hiccup with their auto pay functionality to where accounts that were scheduled for payment on the 12th and some that weren't due yet, they weren't due until the 19th or the 23rd. They were all pulled from bank accounts or credit cards early. And so some of those were returned on the 10th, and it happened on the 11th. Those, some were returned, some were kept because they were due the 12th. So it's kind of, there's like four batches of customers that were impacted. Those that were due the 12th that was pulled, those that were, that were due the 12th but weren't pulled, and then those that were due the 19th that were pulled early and then refunded, and some that were due the 19th that are refunded and processed. And so I provided you guys each with copies of the emails that were sent out to those applicable groups of customers. We were able to identify who was in each group or what happened to each one and send those customized emails to the applicable customers so that they knew kind of what was going on. We basically decided to not go back and try to auto pull the bank pulls or the credit card pulls for the 12th or the 19th because of all the kind of pickups going on. We didn't want to add more problems to that. And so the email elicits that we're asking customers to come in and pay manually even though they were scheduled for auto pay on the 12th or the 19th to look at their bank accounts. Some of those returned, so those refunds may take up to 14 days. We were notified by the credit card processor. And so this is allowing them to watch their bank statement. Once that payment is returned, then they come make payments out. We don't, we didn't want to have any double charges where then customers are at deficit, two payments worth on their accounts or in their credit cards, and then experience where they can't pay other bills or, you know, whatever other negative effects could come out of this. So this was our solution to say, hey, let's just pause for a second, let everything dust settle. We've delayed the payment due date to the 28th to allow customers to have time to get everything settled. We are billing some of the cycles that are impacted on it this week. So depending on if they've made that payment or not, manually they may get a disconnect notice saying they didn't pay their last bill because it's still in process. So in the email, it elicits they can disregard that or worry about that disconnect notice that comes. And then we're not assessing late penalties. We're not actually disconnecting. That notice is auto-generated based off that balance due remaining from the previous statement. And so we can't not send those. It's just part of the process. So this is hopefully going to get out to the customers that are impacted, let them know what's going on. We'll then kick back on the auto payment once we get past today. So our next round of auto pay will be the 23rd. Everything should be sorted out. The company worked through the bugs. They're confident that it'll be better going forward. And so we'll turn it back on, and those cycles after they're set up for auto pay should continue to receive it. But I know you guys probably have some questions. If you have questions for me, I'd love to answer today. We had some customers coming in today with questions about the emails, but it sounds like they've got the emails. At least the communication is there, so that, for now.
Just off of first glance, on the last page, for those who were incorrectly charged and then the refund was never processed, I noticed that there's a $30 credit towards a future bill. How is that decided? Like, how's that, yeah, for that group?
So the bulk of those that were charged a week early, we refunded, and the providers thought they refunded everybody. But there was a batch that, when they got the notification or the information from the processor, it was misinformed that they'd all been refunded. We discovered this batch of about 75 customers that never got the process, the return process. The negative impact to them is that a week early, that could impact their other bills being repaid. They could have an overdraft because they weren't assisting those funds. So because we weren't able to process that refund, that's why we decided to apply the credit to those accounts. If we initiated the refund when we discovered that they had been processed on Friday, if it could take up to two more weeks, that felt like that was just going to cause more pain. And so it was kind of an elected decision to say, hey, rather than start refund now, you might even get it till after their bill is now due on Monday anyway, and just create more headache. We said, we're going to do that, compensate them with that credit to try to kind of make do. We also intended that if any of those customers did have overdraft charges or other bills that were late because they didn't have the funds in their account, if they can notify us of that information and provide that documentation, we'll provide that to the diversified billing solutions, and they're going to reimburse them for those charges.
So any overdrafts that the customers experienced due to it that pulled, then if they just bring in you, so?
Yeah, if they've had any sort of detrimental impact, we ask that they can provide us that information, and we'll work to resolve it as best we can. Us and the diversified billing solution, that's kind of where they stemmed from. They're the ones who are probably going to be processing those refund amounts for those overdraft fees or anything else we can quantify. The $30 was because maybe they're trying to quantify them. Maybe there wasn't an overdraft fee. Maybe they had enough balance in their fund, but it was still not okay that this happened a week early. And so this is us saying, regardless of whether you had a detrimental financial impact or not, we want to make up for the fact that this came out a week early. And we were, our all intents and purposes, we thought, oh, you know, it'll be refunded and found out Friday that they had not. So this is our attempt to try to resolve that as best as possible. If any customers have specific concerns, they can talk to me. They can talk to our office. We're happy to, you know, talk through any specific circumstances they've gone through. We know that this has been a little bit chaotic, and we're trying to resolve that as best we can and every unique and specific one I do.
Perfect. Yeah. Thank you so much.
All right. Item A, under Report of the City Manager, Communications Manager Lopez will provide information on the 2024 Citizens Academy Program. Yami?
Good afternoon, Vice President and Commissioners. We would like to announce that the 2024 Citizens Academy will begin on March 21st this year, and registration opens tomorrow. Citizens Academy is a civic engagement opportunity designed to showcase the inner workings of local government. It offers an opportunity to make new connections, witness behind the scenes, and meet the individuals and departments that keep our city running. Participants meet Thursday evenings for approximately three hours over the course of eight weeks from March 21st through May 9th. The program is capped at 24 participants, and we currently have a list of 13 residents ready to register once registration opens tomorrow. Registration information will be available on our social media platforms and on the website. We look forward to another engaging Citizens Academy here.
Sir, could you, what was the cap on how many people you could send up?
24. And then last year, we closed registration. It will leave within a week and a half, and as usual, within a month.
That's great. Thank you.
Items B through F are staff reports. Do you have any questions on those staff reports? We'd be happy to try to answer them. Moving forward, meetings of note, you'll see some items on there if they require RSVPs. We'd ask that you do that through the city clerk's office. Have either Cee Lan or Cory take care of that for you. I think we're ready for item 9A. This is the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, it would be ordinance number 2597-2024A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2597-2024A.
Second? Has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10A, the governing body has asked to review and approve a resolution regarding the city's responding to a financial emergency plan. And if approved, it would be resolution number 3099-2024. Jared?
All right. The city has identified the following circumstances under which a financial emergency should be declared and has outlined those circumstances in its formally adopted financial management guidelines responding to a financial emergency. The commission is required to review these financial indicators each year. Staff provides the following information as of December 31st, 2023, in response to each circumstance described in the guidelines. The first is revenues are less than budgeted such that cities projected budgeted revenues are no longer anticipated to cover projected revenues. The revenues in the general bond and interest and airport funds exceeded budgeted amounts. The property and motor vehicle tax collections of these funds show strong collections. Sales tax collections are also steady with an increase of approximately 0.54% over 2022 collections. City enterprise fund revenues, except for the electric utility, were always projected in the budget. The expenses in electric utility were below budget as well, balancing out the budget, the below budget revenues. Number two, reserves fall below the performance goal as identified in the fund balance guideline. If the fund has not yet met the performance goal, an emergency would be defined as decrease in the reserve from the previous year if the spend down of the fund was not planned or budgeted. The general fund cash balance on December 31st, 2023 was $9,650,494. The fund balance policy for the general fund states to maintain a minimum of 15% of the general fund's annual operating budget. That amount for 2023 is $5,524,654. The cash in 2024 of $9,650,494 exceeded the budget estimates by $3,115,850. The community trust reserve is to maintain a minimum fund balance of $2 million. On December 31st, 2023, the cash balance was $2,243,946. Number three, the city is unable to reduce expenditures in the amount required to structurally balance the budget. The city has measures in place should the situation occur. It would involve the city manager working with department heads to resolve budgeted expenditures that can be reduced. Number four, an unforeseen extreme event requiring significant expenditures for repair or remediation that exceeds 20% of the fund budget. The city did not experience any unforeseen extreme events requiring significant expenditures or remediation exceeding 20% of any fund's budget. Number five, the loss of a primary employer in the city resulting in a 2% or more increase in the city unemployment rate, a projected 10% drop in city valuation, or 10% drop in population. The 10 largest employers in Fiddy County, as noted in the city ACFR, have shown no indication of a slowdown in the economy. The unemployment rate for December 2023 is 1.5% compared to 1.9% the previous year. The city does not anticipate a drop in valuation in 2024, which is reflected in the continuation of building permits being issued and preliminary data indicating property values increasing over prior year's valuations. For December 31st, 2023, the calculation of the city population by the Neighborhood Development Service Department using U.S. Census Bureau data and residential meter data is 31,142. With this information is the staff's determination that a financial emergency does not exist. Accordingly, resolutions for your considerations have been prepared, and the alternatives before you today are that the governing body may approve the resolution as presented, or the governing body may not approve the resolution as presented and provide additional direction. Staff recommends that the governing body approve resolution.
3099.
3099-2024. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner, I move that we approve resolution number 3099-2024, declaring no financial emergency exists for the city of Garden City, Kansas.
I second.
Has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
This is always good news, so, yeah.
Yeah.
10B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an ordinance annexing real property located behind the lots along the 3200 block of North 8th Street and the north edge of the irrigation ditch in the city boundaries. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2976-2024. Alicia?
Commissioners, Oiko's Development Corporation and James Richard Cornett Regultable Trust are the property owners of plus or minus 1.9 acres located behind the lots along the 3200 block of North 8th Street and the north edge of the irrigation ditch, consented to annex into the city of Garden City. The property is zoned, multiple-family residential district, and is contiguous to the current city boundaries. The surrounding acreage was annexed into the city in 1981. Of annexation occurred, the legal description did not include the irrigation ditches that were owned by the property owners at the time. The purpose of this annexation is to correct the previous ordinance from 1981 by adding the remaining plus or minus 1.89 acres of irrigation ditch. The alternatives before you are the governing body may approve the ordinance annexing plus or minus 1.89 acres into the city boundaries. The governing body may not approve the ordinance. And staff recommends the governing body approve the ordinance annexing the plus or minus 1.89 acres into city boundaries.
Yeah, this just makes sense, so.
Any discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 2976-2024.
Second? Has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the reinvestment housing incentive district for Hunter's Glen Phase 3A. If approved, this would be resolution 3100-2024.
As required by the RHAD statute, this resolution establishes a date and time for a public hearing at which a development plan and an ordinance establishing Hunter's Glen 3A RHAD will be considered. The date and time proposed in the resolution is April 2nd, 2024, at 1:15 P. M. A preliminary copy of the development plan to be considered at the time will be available in the city clerk's office. This area has been approved by the state of Kansas to be included in the RHAD program. This resolution is the second step to the commission. The commission needs to establish the RHAD district for Hunter's Glen 3A. The development is generally located west of North 3rd Street and north of Lee Wood Avenue. This development will consist of 12 blocks in which the developer, Oiko's Development Corporation, intends to build two duplexes and 10 fourplexes. The remainder of the tracks will be plotted at a later date. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends the governing body approve the attached resolution.
I move that we approve resolution number 3100-2024.
I second.
Has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the reinvestment housing incentive district for Hunter's Glen Phase 3B. And if approved, this would be resolution number 3101-2024. Alicia?
As required by the RHAD statute, this resolution establishes a date and time for public hearing at which a development plan and an ordinance establishing Hunter's Glen 3B RHAD will be considered. The date and time proposed in the resolution is April 2nd, 2024, at 1:30 P. M. A preliminary copy of the development plan to be considered at the time will be available in the city clerk's office. This area has been approved by the state of Kansas to be included in the RHAD program. This resolution is the second step the commission needs to establish the RHAD district for Hunter's Glen 3B. The development is generally located west of North 3rd Street and west of Lee Wood Avenue. This development will consist of 18 lots in which the developer, Oiko's Development Corporation, intends to build two duplexes and 16 fourplexes. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. And staff would recommend the governing body approve the attached resolution.
Can I entertain a motion?
I move that we approve resolution number 3101-2024.
Second? Has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, and if approved, it would abate nuisance conditions at 609 East Chestnut. The resolution number is 3102-2024. Alicia, or Trent, Alicia, whoever.
The governing body of the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain nuisance conditions on private property with the city of Garden City. It has been determined that the residence located at 609 East Chestnut Street has an environmental nuisance condition on the property and is in violation of the city's environmental codes. There are dressers, containers, a stove, a water heater, pallets, branches, and a mattress scattered throughout the yard. Staff has visited the property on many occasions. The property owner and the residents have been notified by two orders of violations sent January 5th, 2024, and January 23rd, 2024. The property owner and the residents were unable to be reached and no contact was attempted by the property owners, according to Section 38-137 of the Environmental Code of Ordinances, and have neither abated the nuisance conditions nor requested a hearing before the governing body. The attached resolution will allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisances on the property. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends the governing body approve the attached resolution, and the fiscal note is the abatement costing incurred by the city shall be charged against the lots or parcels on ground on which environmental nuisances are located.
I move that we approve resolution number 3102-2024.
I second.
Has a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item F, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, and if approved, it would be resolution 3103-2024, and abate conditions at 905 North 4th Street. The background for this item is similar to the one in the background as far as the notice. The only difference is the property and the violation. So unless you have questions, Alicia, I think you're poised for a motion.
I move that we approve resolution number 3103-2024.
I second.
Has motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 12A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve task order number six between the city of Garden City and HNTB for professional services for the procurement of snow removal equipment and an aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle at Garden City Regional Airport. Rochelle? Rochelle.
Yes, as Matt indicated before you is Task Order Number 6. The city does have a master agreement with HNTB to provide professional services for the airport. Task Order Number 6 includes a procurement of an R vehicle and SRE vehicle. And with that, it's under our bill funding that we receive for the bipartisan infrastructure. Yes, sorry. I have all the acronyms, but not necessarily the law. So this is part of AIP 48 for the airport. So kind of just the process of this is if this is approved, HNTB will start gathering the specs for the equipment, and then we'll review our staff, including the fire department, regarding the R vehicle. And we will get that out to bid, accept bids, and then those bids are presented to you in the AIP application before we present it to the federal government for approval. Then the federal government approves that, and then they issue the grant agreement, and then the city commission approves the grant agreement as well. So it's a long process with a lot of decisions to be made, but this is before you for consideration and approval. The fiscal note does indicate that it is only 5% of the total cost that the city is paying for this. So it's $975,000, the city's portion of this. Because this is an AIP project, it's a 95-5 split with the FAA. And that is because we're an economically disadvantaged community at this time. So we do have that 5% city cost share rather than the normal 10%.
So my only question was, the $19,000, do they set that amount? Or is that something that, from your previous gathering information, that you have set? Or?
So that amount comes from HNTB. It's their cost analysis of how much it's going to cost.
That's okay. That's how they did that.
Provide all the recruitment services on their behalf.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Task Order Number 6 between the city of Garden City and HNTB for professional services for the procurement of snow removal equipment and aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle at Garden City Regional Airport. And the amount of listed.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks, Rochelle. Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an extension of term of effluent water agreements and agreement with respect to due diligence for asset purchase agreement between the city of Garden City and Wheatland Electric Cooperative Inc.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Since June 22nd of 2004, the city and Wheatland Electric have participated in an effluent water agreement for the use of treated effluent water produced by the city's wastewater treatment plant. The current agreement expires June 22nd of 2024. The city and Wheatland have been working to develop a new effluent water agreement, which will continue to provide water for use by Wheatland while reserving resources for the city to pursue its Garden City Water Reuse Project, which will receive funds designated by the United States Congress. Negotiations with Wheatland have also included the purchase of an effluent water pipeline and pumping assets from Wheatland that could be utilized for the Garden City Water Reuse Project. The law firm of Triplet Wolf and Garrison represent the city of Garden City on this particular case. This extension provides the city with a method to align a new agreement with the implementation of the Garden City Water Reuse Project. The document addresses water delivery during the extension period and due diligence activities regarding the procurement of assets. The provisions modified from this original agreement are outlining the attached agreement that you guys have and provide the mechanism to implement the new effluent water agreement and an asset purchase agreement if and when approved by the governing body. So your alternatives are to approve the extension of term of the effluent water agreements due to respect of due diligence for asset purchase agreement with Wheatland. Alternative number two is you do not approve the agreement. Number three is you can provide staff a different direction. Staff recommends alternative one. Now you approve the extension of term of effluent water agreements and agreement with respect to due diligence for an asset purchase agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions if I can answer them for us here.
So I read through the water agreement. So does this have an end date? Or is it just depending upon when? Is there something that triggers the purchase? And the dissolution of this agreement? Or?
This, well, the current agreement will expire in June.
Yeah, in June, right.
This new one will allow us to allow the agreement to continue until we've come up with a finalized agreement.
Okay.
Purchase of their facilities, that pipeline, the stuff we showed you in that.
So there is no date set in stone until it's okay. I move that we approve the extension of term of effluent water agreements and agreement with respect to due diligence for asset purchase agreement.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the bid from Lee Construction for $869,900 on Phase 4 of the Southeast Park Project. Nolan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I figured I'd kick off Read Across America Week with a long item. So the city solicited bids for the Southeast Park Phase 4 Plaza Improvement Construction Project on November 27th of last year. And the bid submissions were due January 16th this year at 9:00 a.m. We received one bid from Lee Construction totaling $869,900. The remaining budget for the Southeast Park Project from the 2021 GO bonds is $779,200. Therefore, we lack about $90,700 in funding, existing funds for the bid of Phase 4. So what's kind of included in this phase is going to be the site furnishings, utility coordination, erosion control, earthwork, site demo, landscaping, irrigation, playground equipment coordination and install, playground servicing and install. The last portion of this phase is going to be the Parks Department doing the hydroseeding for grass, wildflowers, native plantings, similar to what Buffalo Dunes has. And that'd be the end of Phase 4's work. Due to the budget constraints, the restroom and shelter are provided as alternatives in the attachment. And they're outside the scope of work for this project's budget at this time. The cost of constructing bathrooms and shelter is an additional $540,500. And that's with both the pavilion and restroom. While just the restroom alone is $442,100. The completion of this phase is set to finish fall of 2024. The city would expect to experience an increase in cost to construct these bathrooms and pavilions at a future date due to the increase of material costs, mobilization, and also patrons. We would assume would ask why there's no bathroom facilities at this location if it completes the whole project and then no restroom together. An alternative option that can be considered would be to provide a portable restroom at that location. So to accomplish this phase with the remaining project budget, staff has worked with SWT Design and Lee Construction to identify areas of a bid where cost savings could be experienced. Through this process, potential savings of $67,250 were identified. The cost savings would include cities self-performing some site demolition, preparation work, and then the removal of light poles, bases, POC for electric, and removal of a handrail for the stairs that's on the playground. Removal of these items would reduce the bid to amount of funds available in the Southeast Park Project. There's also opportunity for additional savings with the removal of some precast concrete stairs at that playground for $20,750 and scaling back the plantings for $22,450. SWT Design requires a 5% or $38,960 construction contingency for this project. To meet this requirement without adding more funds, the 5% will be held from the landscape budget line of $60,000 and used if needed and deducted from this account. An alternative option for funding the additional cost of this project would be the revenue from the .15 sales tax. The revenue collected from the .15 sales tax is used to cover the debt service for the 2021 GO bond funds issued for the airport terminal, skate park, Southeast Park projects. Any collection amounts in excess of the debt obligations can be used for additional costs for those projects, improvements to the parks and recreation facilities, sidewalks and trails, and add volume tax relief. As of December 31st, 2023, the .15 sales tax fund surplus cash balance of $350,169 of .15 sales tax collections above the obligations paid in 2023. The estimated, 2024 estimated .15 sales tax collections are $1368,000. And then the 2024 debt service cost of $971,912 with $128,456 due in April, and then $843,456 due in October. Therefore, the city anticipates additional excess revenues to be collected in 2024 of approximately $400,000. So the majority of this excess will not be available until the end of the year. These excess collections, in addition to the $350,000 surplus cash balance available as of December 31st, 2023, would provide an additional $750,000. It is anticipated that approximately $350,000 would be available up through September, and an additional $400,000 would be collected October through December. Okay, if the commission intends to approve the bid from Lee Construction Phase 4, there are few alternatives to choose from. Approve the bid with the budget savings identified. So no additional funding would be required to complete this phase. City staff would be involved in completing a lot of the portions of this work. Approve the, and the second one would be approve the bid of $869,900 in utilized collections from the .15 sales tax to cover the additional budget needed of $90,700. The project would be completed as specified in RFP, though the bathrooms and shelter would not be included. The bathroom and shelter could be completed at a future date when excess of revenues are available, though an increased cost and impact on patrons would be expected on these restrooms and pavilions before the park. The third is approve the bid of $869,900 and approve one of the alternatives presented to include the restrooms. So the restroom and pavilion or shelter is $540,500. And then restroom without the pavilion is $442,100. And that's utilizing the collections from the .15 sales tax to cover the additional budget needed of either $631,200 or $532,800. If the commission elects to utilize the anticipated surplus of .15 sales tax revenue for the project expenses, and timing of the project requires payment before those excess revenues are available, the city will utilize the community trust reserve to pay the cost of this project. At the end of the 2024, when the excess revenues have been collected, a transfer from the .15 sales tax fund to the community trust reserve will reimburse those costs that were experienced. Balance of the community trust reserve as of December 31st, 2023 The assumptions for the excess revenues the city expects from .15 sales tax in 2024 are based on collections from the last 18 months. The risk to allocating the .15 tax revenues towards other projects would be that a downturn in sales tax collections could leave a deficit coverage of debt service, and the city would need to find other funding sources to comply with the debt service obligations. All right, so with that, we've got a few alternatives. First one, the governing body may approve the bid with the cost savings from Lee Construction Incorporated to complete the Southeast Park Phase 4 Plaza Improvement Construction Project of $779,251. Second alternative, the governing body may approve the bid from Lee Construction Incorporated to complete Southeast Park Phase 4 Plaza Improvement Construction Project of $869,900. Third one is the governing body may approve the bid from Lee Construction Incorporated to complete Southeast Park Phase 4 of $469,900, as well as alternative one, which would be the bathroom and the pavilion with a cost of $540,500. Total cost of $14,040. And then the fourth alternative is the governing body may approve the bid from Lee Construction to complete the Southeast Park Phase 4 project for $869,000, or $869,900, as well as alternative two, which is the restroom only, with a cost of $442,100 for a total cost of $1,312,000. The governing body may deny the bid from Lee Construction to complete the Southeast Park Phase 4 project for $869,900. And then the sixth alternative would be the governing body may give further direction or recommendation. Staff recommends governing body approve the bid for Lee Construction to complete the Southeast Park Phase 4 project for $869,900, utilizing collections of the .15 sales tax to cover the $90,700. Staff recognizes the importance of having bathroom facilities at the location and recommends a plan to include them now or in the near future, but has no recommendations to which option and timing the commission. Fiscal note, the project is funded through the 2021 GO bond funds. The Southeast Park Project code 40477100-6152 has a remaining balance of $779,251.51 of the GO bond fund revenues. If the commission elects to utilize the surplus revenues from the .15 sales tax to accomplish the balance of the project scope, the budget, for that line item will be adjusted accordingly. Staff will monitor the collection of revenues and utilize the community trust reserve to complete the cost of the project and in the interim, if collections are not sufficient enough to cover costs until such time as the revenues are received and the community trust reserves can be reimbursed. Any questions?
Wow.
That was long. Hopefully nobody fell asleep.
So what was number three? So I didn't miss, so, you know, so this, my thinking is this idea. Here we have this really great park, our first opportunity. And you think about Sports of the World, the two schools near, and all of the housing, not having bathrooms or, and they always get more expensive if we wait. But I wasn't sure what the amount was on number three. I, I'm sorry, I missed the total amount.
No, you're right. There's a lot of numbers.
Yeah, I just.
So it's, I noticed there's a typo. It should, all those should say $869,900, like it does earlier in the agenda item. So that's the cost for the whole project, not including the restrooms. Number three would be having the restroom and pavilion. So that'd be the restroom plus the shelter. That we could rent the shelter for quinceaneras, parties, whatever. And that would be $540,500 to add on top of that.
So would that be then $1,000, $1,410,400? So that's just my thinking with, you know, here you have this incredible park that so many people could actually utilize, or even shopping over there. So, but, so I would, three would be my recommendation, but.
So just wanted to know what exactly would be the process? Let's say if we're under on the amount collected for 2024 from the 15 cent a tax, what exactly would be the process then? If we do approve this and we end up saying, is that $400,000 we collect? Or $300,000?
So similarly, you guys, the commission approved utilizing some of the excess funds for the airport as well as the golf project last year. The same risk occurs where we're obligated for the next 15 years, 13 years, to pay the debt service. If we saw downturn in tax collections, we'd have to lean on the other revenue sources of the city to pay that obligation. So whether that be property tax valuation increase or property tax assessment increase, whatever it is, the city would have to find a way to fund that. So anytime we say that these are excess funds, it's with an asterisk saying these are excess funds if everything else stays equal and we continue to collect at the same rate. So there is a risk associated with allocating these until that fund had collected the full balance of all debt service dues over the next 12 years, 13 years, and had them all sitting in a pot ready to go. There's really no excess funds. They're just a projected excess fund. So to your point, if, if we strike out here, if we say, hey, let's go use these dollars for this project, and then we do see a downturn in sales tax, there could be a chance where you'd have to find some other revenue source or other allocation of revenues to cover the cost here.
So Jerry or Nolan, does the 2021 GO bond expire? Like, is there like, we have to act right away?
I don't know if I fully understand. So those funds, we issued those bonds in 2021, and they basically said, hey, we know these projects are going to cost this much, this much, this much. We issued enough bonds that we got all those dollars in place for that. And then we allocate the project. So 8 million approximately went to the airport, and then 3 million, 4 million went to the Parks projects, the Southeast Park and the Skate Park. Then we spend those dollars down while the projects continue. They're usually expensed within 18 to 19 years. They're usually expensed within eighteen to twenty-four months at the most, so we're a little lagging here in how quickly we usually spend those dollars down. And then that debt service is on the books for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, however long we issue the debt for. Um, so this is, the, the money for the airport has been moved to the airport project fund, um, and that will be fully expensed this year as they wrap up the terminal project. The skate park has a little bit of a balance remaining, but not very much as they wrap up that project. And then Southeast Park, we would kind of expense the rest of the, those funds by the end of this calendar year as well.
Yeah, I, I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Andrew to have a bathroom, but also, um, one big implication arises is we only have three mines operating at this table right now, and this is a big number compared to our last, um, a few items ago, which was like twenty thousand. So I wonder if it might be prudent to, to table this item until we have all the other commissioners here get their input on this.
Would that be an issue at all, Nolan? So.
I think an alternative, if you wanted to approve the bid, I think we could probably adopt or accept the alternative from the bathrooms and the shelter at a different time. So if you wanted to say, hey, let's go forward with the base bid as presented, I believe Lee Construction is flexible, and when we pull the trigger on, say, hey, we're into alternative one or alternative two as well. So if you want to table that piece, that's another option, and you can say, hey, let's, let's go forward with the project and then come back with a decision on whether we have the bathrooms and the shelter.
Otherwise, I think we'll miss our timing, and you think about, if you put it off too long, then they'll miss the timing. And Lee Construction, if they take another job before we get them locked down. But I do, I did wanna say, I really appreciate the savings that you guys looked for and found, and, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard with the construction costs, and I, I think those are significant, and so.
And I will say that this twenty-one GeoBond, the timing of Southeast Park was kind of in a mix of all the inflation of costs we saw. So when we bid out or bonded that project, our assumption of these costs was quite a bit lower than what it ended up being. And so the, the deficit that we're experiencing is due to those increased project costs we saw across the board for the skate park as well as Southeast Park.
I mean, commissioners, I would be good with doing number three, but if you wanna just do the part, you know, where we actually get them working on the other, and then we wait for the bathrooms, we can, I'm certainly agreeable to that also.
Yeah, sounds good.
So then that would, what, so, I'm sorry, that, which one would that be then? If we just wanna approve, would it be just number, item two, and then come back and revisit the bathrooms and the pavilion?
So it would be, I mean, if you had a fear, are you looking at doing the cost savings? If not, it'd be the full eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, and that'd be everything but the restrooms. That includes it without the cost.
Right, okay.
If you wanna throw in those cost savings, uh, like I said, we identified, uh, I think it was like sixty-seven thousand.
So are you recommending the cost savings, or? I guess that's what I'm confused, I thought they were included in the eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred, so.
No, that's just in, uh, that.
That's just based on their bid.
Maybe seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Um, we're recommending the full project, but, um, we just had to find that ninety, I think it was ninety thousand.
Which I think that can be. Seven, seven hundred?
Yeah. Yeah, I move that we approve, uh, the bid from Lee Construction to complete Southeast Park Phase Four Placid Improvement Construction Project for eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred, and then put on hold the bathroom and the pavilion to be visited at the, when the, when the full commission can be in session, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then I second.
Has been a motion of second. Any further discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Nolan.
Thank you.
Jared, that, or Nolan, that was the longest.
Yeah.
That was the longest memo ever, that was, yeah.
That ran across.
That's really good, yeah, you did a great job, yeah.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a proposal from Rezatek Global Inc. for a surface deformation and pipeline leak risk study of the city water distribution system.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, or, I guess, or Mayor is.
Yeah, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, the city water distribution system consists of a hundred and eighty miles of distribution main, and approximately one half of that system is cast iron main. Uh, we find the majority of our water main breaks, uh, that our utility repairs is on cast iron pipe. The water utility has identified a number of water main replacement projects to address in the coming years to keep the system updated, and that'd be, um, presented to the governing body through our capital improvement process. The, the three-year data gathering study that's proposed today by Rezatek will use geospatial analysis combined with, uh, information about our main break incidents in the water utility to predict what areas of the system are most likely to experience breaks from ground movement. The ground movement detected by Rezatek using satellite technology will be overlaid with the water distribution system to create a model that can be used to triage main replacement projects and help inform the selection of mains to be replaced. A case study of another Kansas utility, Water One, in Johnson County highlights the process and information gathered by Rezatek that's attached with your memo. Uh, the initial term of the project is thirty-six calendar months from the effective date. Project deliverables will be provided as follows. The pipeline risk, the first delivery is, uh, three-year retrospective analysis delivered as a baseline model, so that would be going back from today. Delivered in forty-five working days following data acceptance and client kickoff meeting. Then, as the project moves forward, prior to the first anniversary of the effective date, an updated, uh, pipeline risk model will be delivered to the city, and then on the second, uh, year prior to that anniversary, uh, an updated, yet another update, uh, to that model will be delivered. Rezatek has received, uh, GIS and historical incident data from April, two thousand and twenty-three. The city will update the information for Rezatek with the latest GIS and incident data when kicking off the project. Uh, the project documents have been reviewed by city legal counsel. Uh, the alternatives for the governing body, uh, may approve the proposal from Rezatek for a surface deformation and pipeline risk study for the city water distribution system. The governing body may not approve the proposal from Rezatek, uh, or the governing body may direct staff to find an alternate solution to this issue, or finally, the governing, governing body may choose not to take any action on the proposal. Uh, staff recommends that the governing body approve the proposal from Rezatek Global for the surface deformation and pipeline leak risk study of the city water distribution system and permit the water resource manager to execute the agreement. Um, the project was included in the two thousand and twenty-four water utility budget, and I've referenced the GL number. Uh, the current balance of the line item is a hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. If approved by the governing body, uh, payment of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars would be payable, uh, upon the effective date, and then addition, additional payments of eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars per year for the following two years update would be, uh, due in two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six. The total cost of the project when completed at the end of the three-year term would be fifty thousand dollars.
So am I understanding that this is so that you, well, to be more proactive and so that, so, I mean, I know that there's some ways you can't be, you have to be reactive when a break happens, but this is to be more proactive in the water?
So, um, we've identified, um, parts of our distribution system that we would like to replace that we've had, um, break issues or water quality issues. And really, the utility, there's, there's three things that are, that are causing, um, breaks. Ground shift, so actually the movement of the ground, uh, causes breaks. Corrosion, uh, is another main cause of pipeline breaks. And then the third, which typically is not an issue in Garden City, is, is fluctuations in pressure. Uh, we have a gravity, uh, our, our system is pressured using gravity through the water tower, so our pressures remain very constant. That's generally not an issue for us, but, uh, corrosion and ground shift create issues. And so as we have a number of projects, I think we've identified somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirteen million dollars worth of the water line replacements that would need to take place, you know, over the next seven to ten years. This helps us identify maybe which projects we should move to the top of this in order to, to try and, uh, reduce the number of breaks that we're having to respond to and, and maintain, um, you know, provide good service to our customers, try and reduce the amount of problems we're running into as we're waiting to replace.
Okay. So geospatial, so that's like, could you explain a little bit about that?
So basically, they're using satellite data, um, to measure the movement of ground, uh, and they can identify, um, areas that are moving more or less. We have, um, we don't have cohesive soil types here in Garden City, so we have some areas that are sandy, some areas that are more clay. Um, we think maybe just getting an idea for what kind of data we're getting back would give us an idea maybe for future planning without having to always go through this process, so we can say, hey, you know, when we did our model, it seemed like sandier soil areas as a community are more problematic, or we may find the opposite. Uh, but the, the idea is just to, um, just to get an idea of, of what areas are more, uh, prone to ground movement, which means typically more prone to pipeline breaks.
And the company sounds like, so how did you find the company? Is it some that they worked before, they recommended? Why somebody that sounds like they really know what they're doing, but I'm just curious about?
We got in touch with them through American Waterworks Association, and I had seen some presentations that they had done, and, um, but they had worked with the city of Olathe, they worked with Johnson County, rural water districts.
So they've been in Kansas.
And, um, I've been at some other conferences where they are working. Um, the, um, there's a Great Lakes, um, water utility that provides about a quarter of the drinking water in Michigan that uses them. They have, uh, enormous pipelines, and so they, they do everything that they can do to prevent breaks, because some of their pipelines are sixty-plus inches, so a main break for them is a very bad day. Uh, we think if it could help us identify, um, do some kind of a triage of water line replacements, it would save the community some money, because we spend probably at least eight thousand dollars per break by the time we've done the repair between manpower, replacement of pavement, things like that. Some, some of our breaks get way more expensive than that, so.
I move that we approve the proposal from Rezatek Global Incorporated for surface deformation and pipeline le- leak risk study for the city waters distribution system.
I second.
Has been a motion of second. Any further discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item E has, uh, one of the parties not, uh, other than the city of Garden City, has asked that this item be removed, I believe.
That's correct.
Yeah, from this agenda, and, uh, we may bring it back at a later date. Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of the community grant funds as recommended by the Community Health Advisory Board.
Good afternoon. In two thousand and nineteen, the Community Health and Advisory Board was tasked with administering the community grant. Guidelines and applications were published to the city's website on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and opened for submissions through January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, giving agencies six business weeks to complete the application. Thirteen agencies submitted applications for the two thousand and twenty-four grant, uh, community grant with requests totaling eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The city commission authorized thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget for the community grant. On February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the CHAB meeting during, the CHAB met during its regularly scheduled meeting to review the applications and recommended awarding thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars to the following agencies as listed in the memo. CHAB recommended the tumble, the tumbleweed festival be redirected to the ARK grant. When creating the ARK grant on December fourth, two thousand and twelve, the governing body established new community grant, uh, grant guidelines that deemed applicants ineligible for the community grant if they were eligible for AFAT grant or ARK grant. These eligibility guidelines are made known during the grant application process. There are three alternatives in front of you. One, the governing body may adopt, I'm sorry, approve CHAB's recommendation to award thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in community grant funds to six agencies as outlined in the memo. Two, the governing body may not approve CHAB's recommendation to award thirty-one thousand, five hundred in the community grant funds to six agencies as outlined in the memo. And three, the governing body may provide staff alternative direction. The Community Health Advisory Board recommends the governing body approve CHAB's recommendation to award thirty-one thousand, five hundred in community grants to fund six agencies. And the fiscal note, if approved, thirty-one thousand will be awarded from the fund as referenced in the memo. And the CHAB board, uh, chair is here.
So, um, so I know this is the first time, and then, so will there be another grant award coming up cycle for the rest of the funds for this year, or?
Um, for the, the other ones will.
This is it?
For CHAB, yes, for the community grant.
For the community grant?
But the Oklahoma one, I think, will be coming up later this year.
Oh, okay, so they can have, okay. Yeah, there's some, I mean, this were, this would be a hard decision, there were some really, I mean, unique projects, I was really surprised at some of the things that people came up with, so it's really, a lot of variety too. And I think they chose a lot of variety, which I really appreciate too, so.
I move that we approve CHAB's recommendation to award thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in community grant funds to six agencies as outlined in the memo.
Second. I feel bad that we always, I know, I'm sorry, but.
Has there been a motion of second? Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Dante.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve reappointing Chief Courtney Pruitt to serve on the twenty-fifth Judicial District Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board for a three-year term from March, two thousand and twenty-four through February, two thousand and twenty-seven.
I'm sure that Chief Pruitt needs one more thing to do. So I would move that we approve the reappointment of Chief, uh, Courtney Pruitt to the board.
I second.
Has been a motion of second? Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
Item H is the consent agenda, and if there aren't any items on there that you'd like to remove and discuss separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items H one through four.
I move to approve consent agenda items H one through four.
Second. Has been a motion of second. Seeing no discussion, and all those in favor say aye. 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 Those opposed, motion passes.
So this is.
We're ready for commissioner reports, and that takes care of the business items for the meeting.
Perfect, thank you. First up for commissioner reports is Commissioner Langrath.
So first, I just wanna thank Fred Jones for taking us on the wastewater tour of the facility. It was nice being able to actually see the facility in person, be able to see where these, our tax dollars are going towards, and it really is a significant port of this, part of the city as well, so it's nice being able to see that. I'd also like to take the time to thank the Vietnamese Association in Garden City for inviting me to attend the Vietnamese New Year celebration here in Garden City on Sunday. I was greatly honored to be invited, and it was great being able to celebrate with everyone there, and I had a tremendous time at the celebration. In fact, I think, probably gained about five pounds at the celebration.
That's pretty funny.
But it really is events like this that truly make Garden City a great, diverse community to be a part of, so I was just really honored to be able to be there. Also, I wanna go ahead and take time to celebrate our championship-winning bowling team. I really liked, at the end of the proclamation, it said, "And call upon all of our citizens of our community to encourage our youth in their endeavors towards excellence in life." I think that is just tremendous, which really shows like what we are striving for with our youth. And then finally, I saw, I just wanna remind folks that today is the last day to register to vote for the twenty-four, twenty twenty, twenty, no, twenty twenty-four presidential preference primary election, so just want my folks to go get registered so that you can vote. Thank you.
Great, and I will go next. Intuition of Commissioner Dick and also Mayor Tee some quick fast facts. Um, so from Fred Jones today is really good, so two and a half million gallons of water run through a plant per day. That is so fascinating, and it runs through a hundred and eighty miles of piping.
That's a lot.
Uh, that was really incredible to see that, and I think, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Citizens, Citizens Academy will go through that tour as well. So please sign up for Citizens Academy to have a deeper appreciation for all the behind-the-scenes work that it takes to flush your toilet, to turn on the lights, but also to be more involved with the community, I think. I think once you start knowing about something, it's really hard not to care. Um, and lastly, Vietnamese New Year was such a fantastic celebration, I was honored to be recognized for the Vietnamese Association. I mean, it's very dear to my heart, because once you leave a country and then you find a new place, you do a lot of the things to remind you of the place that you love. We keep traditions, because it reminds me of, um, the people that I love. I keep gifts from people, not because it's gonna be useful, I keep it in a little box, but, but it sits on my desk, because it reminds me of those who love me. And also, congratulations, you fight bowling. That is so incredible, it's the first in the history, and it is such a great honor for Garden City to receive that through our amazing students. And with that, Commissioner Andrew.
Okay. So, yeah, I do wanna, um, say thank you for the pre-meeting. I, you know, the thing about it, I would, um, a lot of people don't know that the pre-meetings are available, oh, and open to the public, now, I don't know if this one was, but. Now, I don't know if this one was, but, but if you had ever wanted to tour the wastewater plant, I'm sure that it was an incredible education. I could not believe how well-kept the grounds were, I mean, just everything from the beginning to the end, you know, were fascinating. And so I just want to remind you, any, most of the pre-meetings are held here, and they're open to the public, and so we encourage you to come and learn about what's going on in in your community. And I also want to just tag on to Commissioner Wynn's, the Citizens Academy. You know, before I became a commissioner, I went through that, and I mean, every time I thought it couldn't get any better, and it did. And so, you know, there's so many really neat things that you, we could point out that. And so lots of really great memories from the Citizens Academy, but it also just encourages you to, as you said, to really not take for granted what we have, but instead really appreciate, and then see what you can do with that appreciation as we, as we grow as a city. The bowling team, I'll tell you, they did awesome, and if, you never want to go against any of these young people, but the thing I thought was really, you know, the dedication of the coaches and the parents, this is, this is a tremendous amount of time out of town and traveling, and I know parents make a lot of sacrifices, so, you know, the bowling team really includes the coaches and also the parents and the community just really supporting that. So with that, I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate it.
With that, the meeting is adjourned.